And then I will enter it over to Chair, to the Chair. So go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I see the recording there. Thank you all for being here and we will call the meeting to order at 3:02 PM. I guess Jennifer, can you do the roll call? It's done differently in different meetings, but if you wouldn't mind doing that, Jennifer, that would be great.
Sure. Vice Mayor Geringer.
Here.
Mayor Candell.
Here.
Board Member PAC.
Here.
Board Member Stern.
Here.
Board Member Connolly.
Here.
Thank you. And then moving on to item number three, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda.
Okay, in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so may, maybe we have a vote to adopt the agenda. I think officially because they are Brown Act meetings, we do have to do a roll call each time. And so the, unless, we don't have Mala here, so I'm going to just make an executive decision that we do. So I will do it. So Mayor Candell.
Aye.
Board Member PAC.
Aye.
Board Member Stern.
Aye.
Board Member Connolly.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And before we go to public comments, I do want to welcome Board Member Connolly, joining us with, as a representative of the governing board from Akalani's. And so Kristin, Board Member Connolly, welcome. And now we'll
Thank you very much.
We'll move to public comment on items not on the agenda. And do we have anyone who would like to make a comment for an item that is not on the agenda?
All right, Madam Chair, we do have one hand raised. So I'll just remind folks that if they do want to comment on an item not on the agenda, to use the raise your hand function, or if you're telephoning in, go ahead and hit star nine. So with that, Adele Connor is joining the meeting now.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah, I, I don't have anything off the agenda. I just wanted to make sure I was connected. So, sorry about that.
Okay, that's okay, Adele, welcome. And you, you know, we will allow for public comment on each of the items. So
Thank you.
Welcome. Good to see you or hear you. I don't see you. Anyone else have public comment for items that are not on the agenda?
We don't have any hands raised, Madam Chair.
Okay, then we will jump into the first part of the meat of our agenda. The item number five is school-related traffic and safety. And I know Mike Moran's going to take this. And just as a reminder, a number, this, this was an item on our meeting in November, I believe. Yes, and we continued it because we ran out of time. And so we are back to talk about this important topic area. So Mike, take it away.
Okay, well, I see some items here. And I also had a comment earlier, earlier that mentioned, why isn't the wording "safe routes to school" on here? Because, you know, that's been a funding source and a theme for, for past grants and things. But everything related to traffic around schools is a safe route to school item. So I just kind of want to clarify that. I'm here to just kind of give some updates of what the city's doing and in conjunction with the schools to try and add some safety measures or, or improve some capital projects around the schools. The first item here, the Burton Valley Pilot Program, this is a, this is something we got funding for about a year or two, about two years ago. And then we had funding removed and then added back in kind of a, in a different way, where they gave us more money to apply to a capital project, but said, we'll trust you to go use the money we give you for that capital project for your pilot study. So we intend to put out a pilot study on, in Burton Valley area to try and improve walkways and pedestrian safety and bicycle safety and routes to school. And it will look at things like deleting parking and trying wider walkways and things like that. So it will be, you know, perhaps even somewhat controversial. But it's, it's a try. We have some funding to do some temporary delineation. I could say it's semi-temporary delineation. Maybe it'll turn into permanent. But just basically a way to improve pedestrian and bikeway routes around that area. And that's for Burton Valley. This Safe Trek status, Safe Trek is this report. It's a complete street safety assessment report. We had a draft final version. I'm expecting a final version any minute now. We did have a few reviewers. People have asked, why can't I see this to provide comments for it? There was a little bit of an opportunity, but it wasn't like an opportunity to just put this out to the entire community. What we have are traffic engineers and biking experts actually coming in and doing an assessment for us and telling us what they see and what they think. And although we had review periods, most of that was, was through the city. And I did have Megan Mittman, as you know, some of you may know her. She's, she's a resident, but she's also an expert in this area of transportation and pedestrian safety and Vision Zero, works for Fair and Pure. So I used hers kind of as an expert reviewer as well. But I'm expecting that final report. And when we receive it, it will be agendized at the following TransCirc meeting as a presentation and basically a discussion item. From that Safe Trek report, that will stem, that will kick off the Burton Valley Pilot Study. There'll have to be another community meeting. But some of the ideas that we're going to see in that Safe Trek report are not limited to one area of the city or another. They're, they're good ideas for all locations in the city. And then some are specific for Burton Valley and for Pleasant Hill Road corridor and for the Maraga Road School Street corridors. So I don't know the exact timing. I'm hoping it will be in February. We're looking at a, I think it's the 18th or so of February. There's actually a TransCirc meeting scheduled, but we've found that it conflicts with the GPAC meeting, our General Plan Advisory Committee, because it was a holiday and things got pushed to Tuesday. But GPAC meetings are Tuesday. So we're, we're polling our commissioners for, I believe it's Wednesday or Thursday of that week. And another good thing about that week, if we can bring this item to TransCirc, is that I'm just super happy to report that we've had a traffic engineer accept the position with the city of Lafayette. His name is Seavash. And he is supposed to start that week. So we will just throw him right into the fire and introduce him. And that is my hope. And it will allow us more dedicated staff time to put into these issues. And I know that there's been many community concerns. There's been a lot of people wanting to get out and about. We're all claustrophobic in our lockdowns and we want to get out and walk. And it's a great time to do it, but it also has brought up some concerns with traffic and pedestrian safety and bicycle safety and so forth. So I'm really looking forward to getting some help. And I sincerely mean that. I think we need to do a better job in this area right now. Next thing, item three, ATP grants. These are larger grants that the city applied for, for walkways in the school street, Topper Lane, St. Mary's Road, kind of like a horseshoe there, and also along the Pleasant Hill Road corridor. They're both multimillion dollar grant requests. We have applied for these before and have not been successful, but we did apply for them. The website still says that we're supposed to find results or ranking in February. They don't have a date. They just, it's just February. Part of why we haven't done well with these in the past is there is, there is an advantage to being a disadvantaged community. You get more points right off the bat. There, there has a rule that 25% of these grants have to go to disadvantaged communities. For the last cycle of grants, 100% of them went to disadvantaged communities. So they may be tweaking that so that it doesn't turn out to be such a slant. I don't know how they're grading it, but one of our projects is similar to a previous submittal. So we'll see how it does compared to last time. And, but I'm not holding my breath to be awarded those, to be very honest. There's, there's a lot of criteria that we don't even want to compete well in, like, do you have, you know, a number of accidents in this zone? And do you have injuries and, and things like that? And we actually don't in these specific areas. And then the last thing, I've got a bike path from Mount Diablo to Akalani's High School. This is, this is one of those grant projects. This is something some of you may be aware of that has been proposed in our community. Eric has even wants to bring this to the city council and it will come to the city council. He's hoping for some community support, some fundraising. It's a great idea. It's a, it's a pathway down the center of Pleasant Hill Road. And what that does is it will help, it will avoid the on-ramps and off-ramps of the freeway if you're a pedestrian or a bicycle. You can go down the middle in a protected alleyway. So it's it's a good project. It's also a multimillion dollar project. So it's, it's just not something that we have funded. We, we don't even have some of our smaller pathways funded for maintenance. I've been explaining to people as they call and request new things to be installed in the city. So we do have another little grant that we're applying for just to widen and do a walkway across from Spring Hill School. Superintendent Whitmore, thank you. He gave us a letter of support for that. I think I just saw that come across today. I'll be submitting that next week, provided our council is good with the project and approves the resolution. So we're always trying. And those are more like $50,000 grants. I'm requesting $70,000 to do some paving, widening and, and add some ramps to make it ADA compliant. And we'll see. We have, we have a better chance, of course, of getting those grants. Those are spread out more uniformly throughout the county. Those are kind of the things we're doing. The Safe Trek is a big thing. It doesn't eliminate past reports that have happened, old safer out to school reports, downtown congestion study, anything like that. At our TransCirc meeting on Wednesday, Chair DiGiorgio was trying to put together some subcommittees. And part of the intent of that is to actually go to schools and look at what are some of the, the quick things we can do that will fall out from all of these reports. And my suggestion to the group and to this group is that we, we take those reports, review them, we take whatever institutional knowledge we have from the community, the schools, the city, we put it all together and then we go do site walks at each school. And we see what things we can implement. Some of these things will just be work orders for public works. It might be striping or signage or delineators or things like that, that we should be able to do very quickly. If we have enough people looking at it and agreeing that yes, we could try this and it'll help. So that's my suggestion. I'm hoping that will start literally in March with, with my new traffic engineer. So we'll have more time to, to spend on this. But my suggestion is that people from this group, the school, the community, TransCirc representative and staff, basically just do the site walks and point so we can see exactly what you're asking for or why you think it's a good idea. So, and I know that there isn't as much value in that because we're not during these COVID times seeing the, the full commute situation, but enough of us have enough history that we know what that really did look like and probably will return to at one time in the future. So anyway, that's kind of my report on safety. Mostly it's to say, we've done a few things. We're applying for some grants. This report is coming out any day now, literally. I, the draft final, I returned back to them prior to the Christmas holiday. So hope to see that soon. And we have some help in Seavash coming soon. So I'm happy about that and hope to be of more help with, with that resource. And I'd be happy to, of course, take any questions.
Great, thanks, Mike. So covered item five, all of the, excuse me, item five and then one through four. And so are there any questions from the committee members of staff?
I do, sorry. I don't have my photo up there to wave my hand, but.
It's okay.
Hello, Mayor.
Hi, hi, Mayor. Thank you, Mike, for your great report. A couple of questions and just to be, to help clarify to everybody. So in your words, what is the difference between a pilot program and like some of the programs we've done in the past? Just to kind of give some, you know, what your vision is of a pilot?
So, I mean, the, the purpose of a pilot is to try it and see if it works, right? And if it really does work and everybody wants it, it could be implemented permanently. But it also means tweaking it during, during the pilot, you know, you can, you can add things. You can learn from the first week, hey, that didn't work, or we need to delineate differently over here. So the intention will probably be a one-year pilot. You, you're going to see seasonal differences in, in any one, you know, school year. Summer's going to look different than, than January. So the intent would be a year pilot. And then at the end of that year, you'd kind of remove things that people didn't like or they didn't want and discuss permanently implementing things you did like.
Great, that sounds great. Thank you for the explanation. And so it does seem like, so I am definitely, you know, far more in favor of, you know, really emphasizing the public safety aspects of these projects. And, and it's not just for, you know, convenience, or we want this, or we like it. It's a true public safety need. And I'm hoping, so in the Safe Trek report, is it, is that their mission? Are they really focused on public safety aspects?
No, absolutely. I mean, basically every recommendation is to, is to improve safety for the most part. It's, is to improve visibility.
Thank you. That's what I want to know.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Um, Chair Geringer, this is Kristin Connolly. I had, I had a question for Mike if no one else had their raised hands raised.
I was just getting ready to ask the board members. So go for it.
Um, so I wanted to just, to go back to the, and just so that I understand the, the idea, and I'm not sure which Eric you were referring to. But I was curious about what, if there was any consultation with us previously. And again, this is my first of these meetings. So you may have consulted with the district many years ago or with some other people, but I just wasn't aware of plans for potentially the, you know, an alleyway in the center of Pleasant Hill Road. And, you know, that'd be a very big deal. I mean, personally thrilled about the, the green paint that's happened there. And, you know, that is certainly improving the safety to and from Akalani's High School. But if you could just comment about what, kind of the, how that idea came to be and got some momentum.
So I don't know how much momentum it has, because it's not a planned project. It's a proposed project brought from the community and it has good merit from a safety standpoint, definitely. But it, it likely would turn into a project if we were to get the ATP grant we applied for, because I'm asking for about $2.9 million. And that would, you know, that would take the reviewers agreeing with this, this is a huge safety improvement and something needed. And then, you know, that would kick it into likely a project, but it would still need council approval. For now, you know, we've just done the improvements we could with the striping and the repaving. And even that, even that striping was part of a smaller grant to, to help us do that. So, but the, this project is just one of several other good recommended projects in the city. At the same time, we applied for some improvements at school streets. And in that vicinity, which quite honestly will serve more users, more particularly, you've got the junior high school and an elementary school and the trail all right there. So, you know, if you look at it from that point, they're both kind of three to four million dollar projects. I don't even know, you know, which would win if you had to pick one. So I'm hesitant to call any of these a projects. None of these are recommended through our capital projects committee or approved by our council as projects at this time. What they are are proposals for projects. So part of what we're doing is just applying for grants to see if we can get money for them specifically, because they're good projects that we're not likely to fund and keeping kind of our maintenance funds for some of the smaller things that we can do.
And Kristin, Eric is Eric Law. He's a resident of Lafayette and he has formed, excuse me, basically came to the Transportation Circulation Commission, has presented to a number of different neighborhood groups. And he has a group on Facebook, Safe Routes to Akalani School, or Safe Routes to Akalani's. And so that's where it is now. He does have rough design. Well, last time I saw any designs, they were rough designs. And so it, that Mike gave a good, I think, description of the status of the idea.
Okay, great. I appreciate the extra context.
Yeah, any other questions, Kristin, before I ask others? I'll go to the
No, oh, wait, thanks.
I'll go to the phone people, the phone folks first. Okay, so Board Member PAC or Stern, any questions of staff?
Not at this time for me.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm using the hand raise function if that ends up being helpful.
There you go. So it is helpful. And I saw that you had also unmuted yourself. So if you'd like to ask questions, please go ahead.
Yeah, I have, I have a vague recollection that, that two or three years ago, I want to say the Lafayette School District Board formally signed on, above and beyond, it sounds like Superintendent Whitmore had recently provided a letter. And I, and I could have sworn, I may be wrong, but I, I thought that the board had weighed in formally in an effort to enhance the submission on that school street grant. We didn't ultimately get it. But can you comment on, on what assistance, you know, might be helpful and kind of from a process perspective, what that, what we should sensitize ourselves to in terms of your outreach and who, who, who you might want to partner with?
So there's great community support. And you're right, that was, that was a TDA cycle four grant. You know, we resubmitted kind of a modified version of that for cycle five. We, we still got letters of support from, from several players out there. I think community supporters, support is great. It's just who we compete against is very difficult for those types of grants. You're competing with people that, that, you know, have several accidents at one location. And you're competing with a disadvantaged community and you're competing, you know, there's a lot of communities that have the same needs we have. And they're just prioritized over us. So that's just, that's, that's the grant process in the state right now. We do have Townsend looking out for other grant opportunities for us. And that's a more concerted effort than other just smaller grants that we can apply for under Measure J, like this TDA Article Three grant that I just am applying for next week. So, but we have great support. I don't know that there's much else we can do. All we could do is present what we've got. I mean, you do need data. They want traffic. They want to know how many users, how many users you make, think you can entice to use it, should you build something. But they also want to know, you know, demographics and distances and accidents and all that kind of information. So, and then, you know, you're just, you're just rated based on that criteria.
So just to be clear, and I appreciate that our demographics may not make us, you know, in, in many of these don't make us particularly attractive. And I'm just wondering which way that cuts. And I, I just don't have personal experience with this process. So I don't personally, you know, I don't have a view. Does that mean that we should go above and beyond what others would do in order to help make ourselves competitive and get in the running? Because we're starting with a handicap and a disadvantage. Or are you saying those other things like community support and the galvanization of the different groups that could weigh in are frankly irrelevant? And so spend your energies elsewhere?
I think that we're getting those, let's say, you know, community support is five points. We're getting our five points for community support. We're getting minus 10 for not being a disadvantaged community. We're getting, you know, minus three for not having a fatality in the route that we're, you know, and, and then there are other communities that are getting all those points now. So it really is, if you, if you see how they grade it, and I, and I had a, a debrief from the state Califor- California Department of Transportation, and literally just asked, if we're not a disadvantaged community, should we just not waste our staff time and apply? Because there's a lot that goes into it. It's, it's 100 hours of work, easy, that goes into these larger grants. And, I mean, you know, their honest answer was for the last cycle, yeah, you probably shouldn't have wasted your time. But as those communities get those other grants, those are going to drop off the list. And they're not likely to get the, the grant in the next cycle because they got one last cycle. And sooner or later, our projects will, will move up the list, I would think. And I don't know how long that will be. All we can do is just keep trying. But I don't think there's, there's a lot of things you can do to change how we're going to score, to be very honest. It's not like you can hire a better grant writer, because for some grants you can. And it's all on the presentation. And it's all on, our library grant was a great example of that years ago. We had a marvelous grant. We got $12 million or something. That's not how the, the ATP and the TDA grants work. They have a scoring rubric. And that's how they work. And so I kind of know in each area, when I'm filling out the categories, here's seven points, we might get five. Here's 10, we might get 10. Here's five, we're going to get zero. I kind of know that literally before I submit it.
I could just mention Kristin Connolly fell off the Zoom and is back in the attendees at 004. Jeff, if you could pull her back over.
Thank you. And I see, excuse me, I see that Board Member PAC has her, her hand up.
Thank you. I just have one follow-up question. When you were talking about the great overwhelming community support where we always get five out of five, I just wanted to confirm when we're talking about the Burton Valley Pilot Project. I know you mentioned a number of folks, is Megan Mittman, is she the parent that lives across the street that has attended these meetings? The expert that?
She is.
Okay. So just, are we also taking the opportunity to work with our principal and maybe our, our parent or leadership at Burton Valley as part of feedback?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sure we will. I mean, it's going to take public meetings and I'm inviting that, absolutely.
Okay, terrific.
I don't have, by the way, I don't have all the ideas on what that pilot study should look like. That's what we have to come up with as a community, as, you know, your eight-year-old son may be able to show me something we need to do that we didn't think about, right? Because he used to walk that route. So and Megan is certainly part of that group and a parent as well. So and Jennifer Lieberman is another person from, from that school that's, that's had a lot of involvement. But there, there are others that weigh in at our TransCirc meetings and city council meetings. And, and they're all invited to participate and help us come up with what this should look like.
Great. Do you anticipate sort of a town hall forum where you would invite and notice? Or is that probably the most?
And I would love it to be in person because that would have helped because you can put up photos and we can point or we can, but I think it's likely going to be a Zoom meeting, the way it's going to fall out. And then maybe those Zooms can lead to specific site visits where we can be outside in distance and right, exactly. And, and maybe not everybody's going to go to those, but maybe four or five, you know, maybe a school rep and a parent rep and a city rep and somebody else who's more interested or less interested can, can show up for those things. I, because I think it's going to take some of that to kind of outline. What I anticipate is a Zoom meeting will have some renderings of things we can try and suggestions. Then in the field, we can literally kind of go mark it out. Maybe I can pre-paint it and people on their own can go look and say, oh, this is how much room we'd have if we did that. And then have a follow-up, either meeting or field meeting or both.
Yeah, that's great. It reminds me of the work that we did prior to the school bonds is we had town halls, you know, where the community, not just parents or kids or teachers could come, but the community and could, could share their experiences and ideas. So thank, thanks for clarifying that.
Sure. And these are going, these, these options are going to directly impact people that live right there, right? So, so they need to have their input as well, of course.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Mike, I did have a sort of a follow-up, but on the, when the Safe Trek report comes to the Transportation and Circulation Commission, at that meeting, it will be presented, the results, the assessment of what comes out of the, or what came out of the assessment. And then the Transportation Circulation Commission Committee will look at that. It will likely drive some of the effort for the Burton Valley Pilot Project. But I think what I heard you say and what I read in the report is that it could also, or also, some of the recommendations could be applied citywide. Would Transportation and Circulation basically discuss the report and look at some action items in the way of implementing it? One question, first part of the question.
So yes, and that's So yes, and that's the, the subcommittees that I was referring to. That's kind of the easiest way. The pilot study is going to happen. Burton Valley's kind of already been laid out and reserved, if you will, right? But these things can be tried in other locations too. You know, it's, it's going to look differently around different schools, but the intent is to give attention to, to each school and each area surrounding the school.
Okay. And at Trans, the TransCirc meeting, the public would also have an opportunity to hear that report, provide input and potentially learn more about the subcommittees that, that will be formed and the work going forward.
So that is correct. And you brought up a good point, Vice Mayor Geringer. My hope is I'll get that report long enough ahead of time to, so the TransCirc and even the public can view it well before it's brought as an agenda item to TransCirc. So the people will maybe have their questions and so forth. I don't know if it will be at that first meeting or another meeting, but one of the primary authors, John Ciccarelli, has, has agreed to basically do that town forum you were talking about, Susie. Yeah, so maybe for more specific. And he's like a bike ped expert. That's his field and he's very familiar with this and came and looked at our specific sites and talked with people and so forth. So there may be too much to digest at one meeting is what I'm saying and there will be more. And that will be a great forum for the public to attend in whatever format we can have it.
Great. And I do appreciate the proactive and I know you can see, you can sense the relief in your face and in your body that there's going to be a traffic engineer that's coming in to join us. And so I appreciate that we're going to be able to have these, the subcommittees, TransCirc, get the report and be able to go out and do site visits around our schools and throughout the community. We're specifically talking about schools here, but thank you for laying out that plan and thanks to TransCirc for having that discussion on that. Do any of the city schools board members or council member have any other additional questions of staff before I open it to public comment? I don't see any little, little hands, real hands. So I will open it up to public comment. And Jeff, do you want to talk about the process again?
We do have a couple of hands raised and I'll just remind folks if they do wish to provide public comment on this agenda item to hit star nine if you're on the phone or use the raise your hand function. So we have Eric Law next, followed by Jennifer Paul. So here's Eric Law.
Hey. Good afternoon, Mike and Vice Mayor Geringer, Mayor Candell. Thank you guys very much for continuing this project. You know, Mike and I have been chatting about this for a little over three years now, I believe. And I'm glad you got another transportation engineer. Hopefully you can hang on to this one for a little longer. I just wanted to bring up that, you know, I've got two students at Lafayette Elementary. My goal for this project is to get the path built before they go to Akalani's. Because yes, the green paint does highlight it, but you know, I was talking with some of our group on safe routes. The only way to truly keep our kids safe is to protect them. We actually had an incident here on Monday where a vehicle was driving the wrong way on St. Mary's Road, passing a dump truck at about 45 plus miles an hour. Unfortunately, when I reported it to Lafayette PD, they have done nothing about it. We do have some really bad drivers in this town. And so putting in a protected bike path that would allow our kids to go from the trail to Akalani's would be a huge improvement. Likewise with the projects over on School Street. We've had lots of close calls with people making illegal right turns on School Street there, coming off of Maraga and trying to run over parents and strollers to beat them coming off the crosswalks. We just have some very aggressive drivers in this town. So we'd appreciate any support you can have. And Kristen, I'd love to have a contact at the school district. We've tried multiple avenues to reach out, talk along with principals and so forth. And we've been unsuccessful. So it'd be great to get some contacts or reach out to you and share us more information with you about this project. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, Eric. Anyone have questions of the speaker?
Oh, just add Vice Mayor Geringer, this is Kristen Connolly. So yeah, no, Eric, I welcome an opportunity to hear more about your plan and, you know, as the liaison to this committee and as a member of this community and serving on the Akalani's Board, I'm happy to, happy to, you know, get engaged with your work here and, and learn more and do my diligence.
And if the two of you don't mind, I have your email addresses. I'm happy to do a email.
I didn't, I didn't want to volunteer you, Teresa, but I figured you could do that.
I appreciate it. Feel free to share mine.
Happy to do that. Okay. So thank you. Any other public comment on all of these items? I do?
Yep. Next up, Madam Chair, oh, we have two hands raised now. So next up is Jennifer Paul, followed by Adele. Here is Jennifer Paul.
Hi, thank you and good afternoon. Thank you for bringing the traffic safety and pedestrian impacts back to this forum. I just wanted to say that I'm thrilled to see that this is going citywide and it really does take the effort of city schools and resident partnership to move this forward. What I would ask is that it, it continue the momentum of moving forward. Having, as many of you know, worked on the Safe Route to School in 2013, it's been extremely frustrating to watch year after year as nothing's been done in traffic safety for that report. And I do know that Safe Trek, I had a chance to look at the draft just last night. It does include a lot of the things, not everything that the, the Safe Route to School did. I just don't want to see us look at it, form committees, and then nothing gets done as had been done as that, as I had seen happen in the past. So I just ask for all of us to make this commitment that this is a citywide effort. Everyone be involved and anything that I can do to help, I am, I have the historical knowledge of, of the past report and also I do understand, you know, there's a, there's a freshness now that this report is new. Once we get it, if there's a way to use it for grants, I just urge us to, to push forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen. And are there any questions from anyone?
It's more of a comment. Hi, Teresa.
Yes.
Hi, Jen, thank you. Yes, we will gladly take your help and absolutely need your input especially around Spring Hill. And thank you for offering. We will definitely hopefully get something actually going this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jennifer, we can decide, I know that you and Mayor Candell and I were working on scheduling a site visit and we can decide if we do that now or we do it as part of this larger initiative. But again, echoing Mayor Candell, thank you for continuing to push in this area.
Thank you very much. Have a nice weekend.
You too. Thanks.
All right, we have two hands raised now.
Sorry, hold on one second. Sorry Supervisor, Superintendent Whitmore, my day job, my.
I just wanted to ask if you do a site visit to Spring Hill that Meta or I'd be invited to walk with you just so we stay in those loops, I think it'd be helpful.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, now Jeff, sorry.
All right, back to public comment here. Adele Connor is going to join the meeting now, followed by Cheryl.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Eric for putting out a proposal. Yours got out, mine hasn't. I just want to know how I could be seen with my complete safest bike and pedestrian path. The green paint that has been put there on Pleasant Hill Road is, to me is not safe. It's just a paint over some white paint, stripes. It's not great for drivers to see all that. I came off the freeway and everything was in the shade and it was just hard to know what that was. I think safest way is to have barriers. I think having something down the middle of a street is not a safe way to go. That should be for an emergency vehicle. It should be for left turn lanes. There's plenty of room on both sides of the road to do things. Which shows on my complete safest street, which goes from, from Pleasant Hill Road all the way to Akalani's Road. All the safe routes that connect to the safest routes that go to the Bart Station, et cetera. That's pretty much it. As far as pilot programs go though, I don't know what's happening with that one pilot program, but when you put a pilot program in, like the two right turn lanes from Maraga Road to Mount Dabbaward, the intention of that was to, it was, it should have all been rolled out together with the Band-Aid approach that I sent in in 2015 and 16 and on and on for Maraga Road, for that, just that corridor that goes down to the schools. For safe pedestrians, safe students. When you put something in that it's a, a snowball effect and you just put in one piece of the puzzle, the outcome's not going to be significant. So I think that's why the double turn lane may not be, maybe ending. If it had been put in with all the rest of the small Band-Aid approaches that were affordable, simple solutions to mitigate traffic and to keep pedestrians safe, it might have worked. But so think about the pilot programs I'm seeing and I would like the opportunity, if there is one, to show my complete street safest bike route, pedestrian route and, and car parking. If there's a way I could show that somehow, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Adele. And hold one second. Are there any questions for the speaker from the committee members? Okay, thank you, Adele.
All right, next up is Cheryl and after that, we don't have any other hands raised. Well, so having said that, now we do. So folks, if you want to use the raise your hand function now, it'll kind of make things go a little bit smoother. So everyone who wants to speak on this agenda item, please raise your hand now. All right, joining the meeting is Cheryl.
Hi, Cheryl.
Hi, hi Teresa. I just wanted to see Mike again smile because I've seen him back when he had all those. He had a couple of people working for him and then they would leave and he's been working on his own and running solo. So I'm so happy, Mike, that you have someone that's going to work for you and help out with TransCirc and all that. I'm just so happy to see you smiling. I think some of these projects for many in the community are a bit in the dark. So I think the schools know about it and the neighborhoods know about it, but I think you could get greater involvement with the citizens to support this because they all want safety for kids and they want, but they don't know about it. I mean, I'm learning about it and, but I'm always a step behind. And I'm involved. So I would wonder, I know GPAC is asking for some space in the Vista. But is there a possibility that we could maybe put some of these ideas out in a Vista? Or in our little law memorandum paper that lands on our driveway? Just so people can see what's going on in the city that are not in those neighborhoods that would support your programs or have suggestions to counter the programs or have the involvement, right? So I just want to use the publications that we have already besides our emails and the community. And then when we have our meetings, Mike, Mike, thank you so much. If you can get the report out on this subject early, I'd love that. And if we could have sign boards, I'm a sign board person. But if we can have sign boards out to just create more awareness for the community, that would be really amazing, especially for TransCirc on projects that are like this big. That I would love to, is the draft report available for people? Are we all waiting for the final report? These are my questions and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hold one second. So Mike, do you want to answer the question about the?
Yeah, so we have not published the draft report. Our commissioners have seen it and they have it, but it's, it's not posted yet. I, again, I expect it very soon.
Okay. I'm just excited.
And any other questions of the speaker?
No, here's Susan's comment. Cheryl, I also agree, especially on these particular, you know, absolutely impactful to community efforts, getting those sign boards out in those communities does seem like, especially these days when it's just communication is tough, I think that would be really a great idea. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No, thank you, Cheryl. Thanks. Good, good to see you.
Okay, and our last public speaker is SW, who's joining the meeting now.
Do we get to play? Who is it? Sorry, Stella.
Hi, sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
I thought I updated my profile.
Welcome, Stella.
Didn't take. So anyway, yes, SW Stella Weatherspoon. I'm a parent within the school district. I've had a daughter at Spring Hill and now at Stanley Middle School. And as a parent, I'm really excited about the work that is going to be undertaken or at least started this year to try to improve the pedestrian bicycle traffic safety around the schools. I'm on the Transportation and Circulation Commission and I'm also excited to participate in the efforts of the subcommittee to really kind of get down to some of the brass tacks and see if we can find some shovel-ready or maybe paint-ready projects that we can push forward and really just kind of seize the day and grab some low-hanging fruit and and make things better for our students and our residents of Lafayette. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks. So are there any questions or comments for the speaker? Seeing no boxes light up. Thank you, Stella. Thanks for all the work that you're doing. Okay, any more public comments?
No public comments at this time.
On this item. Okay, we'll bring it back. Are there any follow-up comments or direction or questions from the committee members? We're going to have these meetings on Friday afternoon all the time. Okay, so we will move on to item number, actually, it's probably my filter's not as good on a Friday afternoon either. So I apologize for attempts at humor. Item number six, we will move on to information and updates from the Akalani's Union High School District. And I guess we will start with the superintendent recognizing that the governing board member may have comments as well. And if I said supervisor, I apologize. My day job, Superintendent Nickerson.
Yes, so since the last meeting, there's been quite a bit happening at the state level. And throughout this pandemic, I think we're all used to kind of the rules and the guidelines changing. And I think that's understandable. We haven't been through a pandemic like this for 100 years. And as they learn more about the virus, the spread and develop greater expertise on how to keep schools safe, our guidance changes. Anyway, there was kind of a December 30th, the governor had a press conference and kind of front-loaded some, some things that were happening with budget, on the budget side as well as on the guidance side and put that out to the community, created quite a bit of confusion at that point because there wasn't a lot of context or documents to what he was sharing. A lot of it became a little bit more clear last week when the state released updated guidance for schools. And they also released the governor's budget, preliminary budget, proposed budget on Friday. So the new guidance for schools is not going to change things for the high school too much. I think it has a little bit greater implications on the K8 or the K6. But what I will say is the, the new guidance brings greater clarity to the definition of whether a school has been open or not. And that has some significance in terms of when a school can reopen. So the, the high schools, Akalani's High School and all of our high schools were deemed open based on the definitions available to the county health officer in October, which provided a little bit more flexibility for. which provided a little bit more flexibility for when we reopen again when the surge subsides. The new guidance from the state brings pretty crystal clear clarity to the definition of whether you've been open and that is whether you've had, whether your school was available for in-person instruction, for a full grade, for all of those who chose to come, which is not the case for our high schools. So therefore, we are, we're not open. We are not looking at, so we have to follow the guidance very clearly from the state. And that's, we must wait until we are red tier and can open five days after that. Which is not too different from the direction the board was going when they made the determination in November to not transition to the hybrid in-person model until we are red tiered data. Now it's until we're red tier. So the state, according to the current guidance, will have to be at red tier data for about a week and a half before it becomes red tier. And then five days later, we could move to the in-person. I think last time we met, I shared a little bit about our models. We do have district-wide, 65% of our families are choosing to come in person when they have that opportunity. And in the hybrid model, 35% are choosing to be on stay in remote. Akalani's High School is a little different from that district average. There are actually 76% are choosing to come to our campus for in-person hybrid. 24% are choosing to stay on the remote. Certainly encouraged by, it seems, the holiday, New Year's surge peaked over the weekend. The data over the weekend, which is a seven-day lag, and it's been coming down. We're hoping that we will see ourselves in red tier data, possibly in February, certainly by March. And then we'll look to make that conversion as quickly as we can. As we, the data get a little bit better, we'll be pushing out more of our small cohorts on campus. We have a few functioning right now, our special day class, and a few targeted groups are happening on our campuses each day. And we'll look to push more of those cohorts and give students opportunities on campus as the public health data, the new case data, the positivity data, the hospital data get better in the, you know, the coming weeks. There's been conversation about sports and some decisions made about sports in the last week. We were pleased last Thursday, the North Coast section, which is kind of the regional section that oversees our sports from the East Bay up to the Oregon border. They voted to provide much more flexibility to leagues to determine their seasons of sport. And that was good because right now the seasons or the sports are allowed to play at certain tiers. For example, tennis, golf, track and field, swimming, cross-country are all allowed by the state guidance to happen during purple tier. And soccer, baseball, I'm sorry, not soccer, girls lacrosse, baseball, softball can happen at red tier. And then there's some other sports that can happen at orange and then yellow. And so by having the discretion within the league, which can be very nimble and can change direction in a matter of days, unlike the North Coast section, the seasons of sport can really respond to the tiers in our county. And so when our county, you know, dips into red, the red seasons can start. Right now, the seasons, the purple seasons are scheduled to begin on February 1st in a week. However, there will be no competitions if we're still in shelter or the stay home, regional stay home order. We did hear from the Chris, Dr. Chris Farinano today that he is hopeful will, the regional stay home order will be lifted within a week or two. So we'll be hopeful for that. And then our sports can move on in a very safe way. The sports happen with, we have distancing and masking whenever possible. And as we move into the red tier, there'll be a little less, fewer restrictions on that. So and then I'll just also something that's, you know, been, been a success story among lots of challenges. COVID testing, we've been doing it with staff in our district once a week. So every week, all members of staff that are on campus are testing. And so far, our positivity rate is very low. We have had some positive cases, but they've been from exposure off of campus. So there has, short of a case within our central service support department in maintenance, there hasn't been any transmission within our campuses or our work sites. So that's good news. We also have been offering community testing, COVID testing for our students and our students' family. We have our third event on Monday at Los Lomas High School. We're moving between the schools. I think our first one was at Akalani's on December 18th, I think. And so far, we've done over 1,000 tests and we have just a few positive. So again, a really low positivity rate and no positives among our students through that testing program. And that testing program is also testing for the antibody, which is, I know, attractive to a lot of folks. And that, we haven't had a lot of positives on that, I think, to many of our teenagers disappointments. They like to see they have the antibody and they're through it. But anyway, that's, that's been successful. And, you know, we put out an email when signups are available and within two hours, we typically have 500 people sign up for these. So it's, there's definitely demand for it. And related to testing, there's some talk statewide because part of nuisance budget proposal for a, and kind of incentive block grant, if schools are opening, he would ask for a pretty high cadence testing of all students. And although we see some value in that, I think logistically, it would be really challenging to pull off. And so it's not something that we have plans to do beyond our community testing. Should there, the nuisance grant proposal come to fruition, which many thing, many people think it's a, it's a kind of a long shot. Then we would explore that and see if we could implement something for more systematic testing of students. We can't require testing of students. But part of that grant proposal would be that you make it available to all the students coming on campus. So I think those are just a few highlights since the last meeting regarding our reopening. And I'm sure Ms. Connolly can add a bit to that.
Kristin, do you want to add anything or? We lose her. There we go.
I can, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that I ended up getting muted automatically. So I was talking and thought you could hear me. Sorry about that. Dr. Nickerson, thank you. No, thank you for that really comprehensive update. I think you're being humble about the role that you're playing in getting our district to this point and being ready to go to the in-person hybrid model. You've really done such a spectacular job meeting the district staff and the school sites in conjunction with Travis Bell and the other principals. So I'll leave it there. I'm happy to answer questions along with you if anyone on the committee has them.
Okay, so any questions for the, for the Akalani's District from other committee members?
I have my hand up. Okay. Thank you. It's actually, it's not so much of a question as a comment. And I am thrilled to hear the progress on both the testing that you guys are doing, especially the community members and the students. I'm assuming that also includes teachers and staff and the low positive rates. The, I did go by, drove by the protest. I don't know if it was a protest for the sports program. And I'm, I'm thank you so much to hear the North Coast is being flexible and allowing at least practices and maybe not competitions yet, but at least in the right direction. That's, that's to me, that these are huge things. And I really do thank you for all the progress that you've been making in just the last couple of months. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Regarding the sports, I know many of our athletes and 60% of our students participate in interscholastic sports. Many of them are not happy. You know, sports provides quite a bit to many of the students. And right now, that group that's kind of organizing those protests, they're trying to get the CIF, or I'm sorry, the State Department of Public Health to shift by one tier, all the allowances right now, which I think, given current public health status, I think that's kind of a long shot. So the rally at Akalani's was mostly football players. And right now, according to state public health guidance, football cannot happen until we reach orange. And I think they recognize that orange could be pretty far out. And so I certainly recognize their disappointment with that. So they would like to see it happen in red. And I don't know if that will change. But yes, we are, we have been allowing them in camps. And as we get to different tiers, they'll be able to do more and more in those camps. So at least gets them out there conditioning in a safe way. So there's a really interesting article in the Contra Costa Times, or maybe it's Mercury News today with many different doctors kind of viewpoint or researchers viewpoint on how safe is it to do sports? So I encourage you to take a look.
Thank you. Appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Dr. Nickerson and Board Member Connolly. And if there may be other questions once Superintendent Whitmore gives his report. So we're moving on to the Lafayette School District and also the Board Member Sturm and Board Member PAC. But we'll start with Superintendent Whitmore.
Thank you very much. Now you have a sense of what it's like to sit in our county superintendent's meeting where we get to listen to the high school superintendents talk about sports. John, John did a very nice job of summarizing the new guidance from the state, but he is correct that there's a piece of it that operates very different for us. The state had a waiver that went in place, I want to say late August or early September for elementary schools to apply to bring back students in TK six. They've now eliminated the waiver process and replaced it with statewide guidance. And it's really the first statewide kind of stake in the ground around when it's safe for students to return. And the benchmark they have set is at 25 cases per 100,000. Our county has been well over 40 since December. John was talking about the decrease over the weekend and John also serves as the regional superintendent's epidemiologist. So we really rely on him to track all this data. And it is taking a, it is on a downward curve finally. And we'll see if that curve kind of holds and brings us toward that territory where we would be at 25 cases and be able to consider looking at bringing our elementary students back. And it would probably be somewhat along the lines of what we had originally planned when we were looking at November dates before the case rates started to surge. But other than that, I think John described what's happening with the state guidance. It does require us to update new plans, to incorporate OSHA guidance into the plans. There's a February 1st deadline for that. And so I know that's where I have spent a lot of time since the new guidance came out last Thursday, trying to understand how these new plan requirements all fit together. And really, it's just plan over plan over plan. We were both on a superintendent's conference call last week where somebody talked about guidance fatigue. And I have a lot of empathy for that. So for us, the challenge is a little different. Our opening, the reopening for us will depend on when that curve, how, when and how that curve drops. I mean, it's true to watch out for when the red tier comes online for the older students too. But if this curve's really dropping really quickly from where we've been to under 25, we'll want to track that and see what dates might be reasonable for us to start thinking about returning. The other thing that it appears to require is sitting down with your employee organizations again. There seems to be different opinions about whether or not you have to do that per the new CDPH guidance, or whether or not you have to do that to access the governor's grants that John talked about. And we're just continuing to track all the advice that's coming from our county office, from CD, from the kind of ed infrastructure that advises districts to make sure we do everything right. So we're ready to open when that moment comes. Like John talked about in his district, we're also continuing to make sure we're serving each student wherever they are today in their relationship to distance learning. So we either have brought back or are very short time away from bringing back small groups of students on our campus for either academic needs or access to the curriculum because distance learning isn't, that setting is not working optimally for that individual student. We have had our special day classes on campus since November and that's been really a very successful effort so far, but from a public health perspective. And also, I think, just the pleasure of being able to connect with those students individually has been a really positive experience for the teachers that are serving them. Let's see. Oh, I don't think John talked too much about the vaccine, but vaccination politics are very interesting right now. We're really hoping that the governor and the California Department of Public Health, or maybe even the federal government, do decide to prioritize teachers. And we know that teachers will be part of tier one B as essential workers. But we would love for them to have some priority for the vaccine, certainly for our frontline teachers that are already back at work and working directly on our campuses with students. There was a rumor earlier this week that the vaccine distribution challenges in California might prevent teachers here from being prioritized ahead of other essential workers. So we're watching that pretty carefully to see how it plays out. We're working together in our Wallamarinda group of six superintendents to kind of have each other's back and seek out opportunities and advocate when we need to advocate for that access to our teachers. I don't think John talked about the state budget. We also had a governor's budget. It comes out the first two weeks of January, every year like clockwork, this year too. It has a little less impact for John because of his funding status than it does for us where we're really dependent on those state funds to start identifying what our 21, 22 budget is going to look like. The kind of preliminary look at that budget is pretty good for us on how the state's going to approach some basic elements of the budget like cost of living. It looks like they're going to kind of accommodate two years of COLA after giving us zero cost of living increase in this current year that we're in. For us, that's a huge deal and would allow us to breathe much easier about what the 21, 22 budget would look like. There's some of the programmatic efforts that the governor is making to address learning loss mitigation probably wouldn't inert to our benefit in either district as much because it looks like he's proposing distributing it on LCFF formula basis, based on your numbers of students who meet the criteria for higher LCFF funding. And we don't do too well when that's the measure for distribution. Just like that December round of stimulus that came from the federal government was was distributed based on your Title I allocations. And so we didn't get much bounty from. And so we didn't get much bounty from that. Kind of interim round of stimulus either. I know the city is interested in work we're doing on, on race and racial equity. I think we've had some really positive outcomes so far this school year. Can't remember exactly what I talked about last time when we did talk about this, but just a few things I would highlight. We had a, and I think I might've told you about this before, but we had a great effort around Thanksgiving and having more culturally responsive discussions about Thanksgiving on our elementary campuses. And that's evolved now into a principal led effort to look at, to look across the calendar at how we celebrate and how we learn about holiday traditions in a way that can be respectful of all cultures. And so I'm excited about that. We've had a group of teachers, 50 teachers complete the first round of teacher training. That's about a quarter of our teachers district wide. And there's a kind of deeper training that will be available to that first cohort. And we're going to bring a second cohort through that introduction to racial equity for teachers. We've been working with a group of parents to develop a district policy on race that we're going to bring to the board on February 2 for a first reading. It borrows heavily from good work that was done well ahead of us in the Akalani's district. So many thanks for all the work. And I know John was very personally involved in that. And so we're stealing broad swaths of it for, for our own consumption. And one thing that I thought it would be nice to share, because I think this collaboration is good and you can still collaborate over Zoom. A group of Akalani students is moving from elementary school to elementary school with a program they call Umbrella. And I do not believe it starts with a Rihanna song, but maybe it doesn't. But it's a discussion for fourth and fifth graders led by high school students about what racial and ethnic identity means. And it's, it's driven home with a giant metaphor about jelly beans and how you manage eat and arrange jelly beans. So we had it at Lafayette Elementary on Wednesday, or either Wednesday or Thursday of this week for the first run of it. And the principal called me afterwards to tell me it was like the most exciting thing she had seen in ages. The, the Akalani's kids were so well prepared. The jelly bean thing worked fabulously. And she just saw her own students, her fourth and fifth graders have a conversation about race and ethnic backgrounds. It was of a higher order than she ever thought that they would be able to have. So thanks again to John and his leadership on these issues over many years. That's now paying dividends for us in our district. And then the last thing I wanted to say is that I know we've been talking on and off about a demographic study and it's been a high priority for us at different junctures. But we've never quite pulled it together. We've decided to to solicit input from the professional firms that do this work. And our district will contract on its own for that demographic study because I think it's important for us to have an independent voice around it. And I'm talking to John to see if there's a way to incorporate the high school aspect of that as we do our study. Obviously our kids end up at his high school, but not all of them end up at the Lafayette High School. And so to the extent it's helpful is the city's looking at how we serve its population over this next decade. It's important to have a good picture from us and also an independent point of view about what the demographics will look like for our student population. And that is it for me. And I'll let Rob or Suzie chime in as they wish. Or ask me questions.
Rob or Suzie, any? Hold on, I see. Rob.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I had two quick items. The school board presidents for the, the local Walla Miranda have been meeting twice monthly. We met this morning and chatted on a bunch of things. A couple of things that might be notable and relevant for this, this group here was one was around vaccinations and to Superintendent Whitmore's point about the potential reprioritization of teachers in the queue for vaccinations. There was discussion about perhaps in a collaborative way in, in conjunction or with the assistance of CSBA making an ad, a joint advocacy pitch and, and just an initial conversation. But if that gets traction within the groups, there may be an opportunity, depending upon the, the various cities positions to do something even more broad and coordinated with respect to prioritizing our teachers being early in the queue as, as, as essential workers. Two, and I, I'm just again tossing this out. I think I had at the back end of the last meeting when we were talking about cadence suggested that maybe there would be value in a quicker pace than, than quarterly. And I did happen to ask, we had a couple of other folks who are, who are participating. And I believe I, my understanding from my discussion this morning is that Arinda is their equivalent of this is meeting monthly. And so they have, they, they weren't previously meeting quite that quickly, but they found that to be helpful. And so perhaps there's an appetite, particularly if we have additional staff. I'm appreciative that you know, that has been a challenge, but that might be something worth us pursuing as well. And then one other issue, just to perhaps to at least chew on is, is the potential, which I do think one of the other local cities is doing and, and following along with Superintendent Whitmore's comments on diversity, inclusion and equity is whether we, whether the elected members of our city are, are, are interested in, in committing to diversity training. I know that it exists for employees. It's mandatory in California. I don't personally have awareness of a counterpart for, for officers, but that, that I, I, it would be something that I, I could, I, I would be supportive of. And we could have conversations about whether we wanted to do that collaboratively, collaboratively as well. I, I must say Superintendent Whitmore, I didn't realize that your repertoire within, in, in music was as expansive as it apparently is. Kudos to you on that. I did have a quick question for Dr. Nickerson. I didn't manage to get my hand up raised quickly enough when, when you were commenting, but thank you for a very thorough presentation. And recognizing, the following has come up a couple of times in, in our board meetings. Recognizing the great complexity in setting a calendar and, and all of the various conditions attendant to, to doing that and including negotiations and whatnot. And also recognizing that it wasn't that long ago that our school year started later and the code dependencies that we have with, with your district. Have, have you had any discussions or thoughts about the potential of moving back your start date with the expectation that things will improve in a, you know, somewhat linear way? And thus time is, is our, is, is our friend in terms of the ability to roll out the next school year in as full a way as we can?
So there hasn't been any board discussion at depth. We've gotten that inquiry from some members of the public with the suggestion that, you know, another month of, of time could be a good thing. I've had conversation with just two board members. And the general sense is that you know, a month probably won't make much difference in terms of the you know, how far the vaccine has gone or things like that. And the, the other kind of the, the cost of, of doing that would be have some other implications. It also has been brought up, should we be doing a longer winter, winter break anticipating that there could be, you know, if depending on how far the vaccine has gone next winter, could we have problems again? So the board hasn't had that discussion publicly, I would imagine in a couple of months. Once we have a greater sense of where we're going, you know, how the vaccine is rolling out and kind of where, you know, what the, the prevalence of, of COVID in our community is. The board will have that discussion, which I know the later the change, the more disruptive it would be for, for folks. But I, I, my sense is that the board doesn't know enough right now to, to make a decision on that. So I know that doesn't really answer your, your question, Rob, but that's just a few thoughts.
Any other comments? Or questions?
Hey, yeah, sorry. So.
No, it's okay. I saw the blue hand.
All right. Hey, um, so thank you. Richard, you have me really intrigued about the jelly beans. I, I, to be honest, you know, we look for, you know, equity and inclusion exercises for the community. Is this, I know it works for the elementary school kids. Is this something that would translate into a community effort? I'm just asking.
I, I honestly don't know. I mean, I didn't see it in action. I just had a chance to see the slides. So I'm happy to talk to, I, I can work with John. John can reach out to the Akalani's kids. I know some of the people connected to some of the kids and I have a diversity committee that would love to kind of tackle that question.
Great.
Also, so let me kind of take it a couple, a couple of different routes to get you some feedback on that.
Yeah, sometimes the simplest messages actually work. And so, yeah, I'd be willing to at least look at it and to see if it might work for the community. Thank you.
I was going to say the same thing, other than I was worried my mic was on to the umbrella and going immediately to the song. But I think that looking at opportunities to, to bring, nobody wants to hear me sing that or anything, looking at opportunities to involve the students and involve the schools and the city, as Rob was saying on the elective part, but Mayor Candell, thanks for bringing that up because I think there are opportunities to, to piggyback on some of these fun things. And I bet the students would love to either if they don't think it works, figure out a way that it might work for some of our community wide stuff. So with that, I believe that we open this for public comment on these two items. I didn't do it after John. I put them both together. And so are there any public comments on the, oh, you know what? Let's do this. Let's have Narup, the city manager, do an update from the city or whoever would be doing that, if there is one on the agenda item. And then we'll take public comment on all of the updates.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Kerry. You know, this was Mike's presentation and, and he represented the city today. I just wanted to let this group know that we are also working on a return to this, to the office plan. It's complicated. There are a lot of issues relating to requiring vaccines or not. Since we deal with the public at the counter, we've been grappling with a lot of issues. And we, our baseline, we don't have criteria like the schools fortunately have. But our guideline is we will open the city offices to the public when everyone in the city offices has had the opportunity to be vaccinated. So just making sure that people have that option. We don't know when that will happen, but that's our baseline. A couple of our facilities have been opened throughout the police department as an example. And Jonathan's crew, at least partially at the community center, because they're doing some wonderful work with with, with the kids and our public works crew is also working. So that's where we are in regarding the return to work. As far as equity and inclusion, 99% of staff has completed the implicit bias training that, which is from the use, it's an online free training, six modules from the University of California. It's a wonderful resource and I would encourage people to use it. It's quick, but it's very insightful and allows you to go in and take some implicit bias tests on a number of fronts, whether it's age related, religion based, I mean, it's all over. But it really is eye opening. So we have completed that and Jennifer and I will be meeting with the mayor and vice mayor because the next step that the council had decided to do was to require, ask the council to do the same and then extend it, open it up to the commissioners and the committee members. So that's our next step. One, since we have kept staff has completed the implicit bias training, we had a kickoff meeting with our facilitator to introduce the subject matter. Now she will be coming back to do a more in-depth discussion and training with all staff. That's my report.
Thank you, Narup. And to, to Rob Sturm's question or Rob Sturm's point, and I know that Meredith Mead, when we were having our, a couple of our early meetings and came back with reports, had asked about including the schools, school boards, superintendents on that. If we could just sort of look at potential. And so this is sort of to the superintendents and to city, to the city manager on whether we could look at the logistics of that, of including the schools. And how big is that? And is it the electeds? And is it logistically?
Are you talking about the implicit bias training? I'd be happy to share the course with Richard and John.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So any questions for the city manager? I don't see any hands real or otherwise. And so now we will open this to public comment. And so just as a reminder, it's public comment on the Akalani's School District Report, the Lafayette School District Updates and the City of Lafayette Updates. I think it's six, seven and eight. So Jeff, do we have any items?
We don't have any hands raised.
Okay, they were so.
But let's give folks a second. If they do want to provide comment, they can use the raise your hand function down at the bottom there of their screens. They're on the phone, R nine. And with that, there are no hands raised, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Everyone was so thorough. And I realized as I was looking at the agenda that we didn't put on our agenda and item, we put adjourned, very important. But we didn't put an item to look at our next meetings and Board Member Sturm brought up the idea of having monthly meetings as we're ramp, I'm going to put that last part as we're ramping back up and establishing momentum. And I wanted to get, we're not going to try to schedule the meeting today. We would ask staff, our, our staffs to do that. That sounded weird to even say that, but but look, Jennifer popped up, but we would ask staff to handle that. And what's the will? So buy a thumbs up monthly for a little while or let things happen and then schedule something in the April. So quarterly, it would be April, bi-monthly. Anyway, discussion, what, what's the will of the group? Monthly.
I, I would support a monthly update, just, just because it's, I, I find it so important for us to understand what the schools are doing. I, I find, I found that update extremely important today. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Recognize. Okay. So why don't we?
I would just, Teresa, Teresa, can you hear me? This is.
Yes, I can.
Okay, so I would just, I I appreciate the the kind word from the mayor about the the school update being helpful. I just a little, I'm so protective of our superintendent's time right now in this critical moment of potentially reopening school. And one month from now, we're going to be in the throes of that. So maybe we'll settle into a monthly, but I just have a friendly request that we actually do this every other month. Because I'm, I am just so aware of the schedule of the superintendent Whitmore and Superintendent Nickerson working basically every day since March. And so I'm just, and I I can be overruled by my colleagues. I will, and I will gladly show up at every meeting. And I will gladly take an update and give their update for them if we need in a month. But I was just, just to throw that out there.
I thank you very much, Kristin. And I would say probably also protective of our staff as well. And I saw that Suzie, you had your hand up, but you put it down. Is that because you support Kristin's?
Yeah, I I think, I think a compromise would be going from quarterly to every other. And then it's pick up and if there is a need because of deadlines or, you know, pressing need, you know, always schedule additional. But I.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, too. There's a lot, there's there's wide ground between quarterly and monthly, so.
Right. So so bi-monthly, so we will work on scheduling something in March. And if there are items other than what we have a wide updates, that's a wide sort of swath of topics. But if there are specific other topics besides traffic and safety, I know that we had discussed talking about fields and more effective use of our resources, both in the city and in the schools. And so just any other topics, and I saw Narup raise her hand.
I'm just mindful of the fact that these items are not on the agenda, so scheduling is a minor issue, but if you want to talk about topics, it would be best to give us direction offline.
Oh, what I was going to say was if you would please get that information to your staff members. Yeah, no, for time's sake, and thank you for reminding me of the Brown Act and the noticing and agendized items. But for time's sake, any items that you would like to have brought to the agenda, please get it to our, to the respective staff members. And with that, everyone have a very, very lovely weekend and be safe. And, you know, good luck to everyone as we're working through the reopening and all of the things that we have going on. And maybe next time we'll ask favorite song as a kickoff since since some people were interested or favorite artist. Anyway, thank you all. Have a great weekend.
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Take care, everybody.